The concern of the National Assembly's Joint Committee is the decay on Nigerian highways, though their great successes were recorded in some parts of the country.
Right Honorable Speaker, Honorable Members, you will recall that on Thursday, 19th October 2023, the House Committees on Works, Environment, after an exhaustive debate, passed a resolution to look at the merits and demerits of the matter at hand. In fulfilling our assignments, we have identified crucial stakeholders, including professionals, manufacturers, contractors, operators in the construction industry, and relevant government ministries, departments, and agencies. The primary objective of the House in passing the resolution that prompted this hearing was to draw attention to the concerns of stakeholders in the ongoing discourse about whether the adoption of concrete technology in road construction Nigeria is a feasible alternative or not. The Parliament must safeguard and protect the interests of society and all stakeholders. The House Committee on Works has been engaging relevant parties by requesting submissions on critical road projects, such as the tour of Abuja-Kaduna Road and the Abuja-Lokhodia-Oba-Jana Road, among others. However, the committee was disappointed to see the significant level of decay on our roads. What is even more concerning is that in some ongoing projects, the work on site is not proportional to the funds allocated to them. There is no doubt that we all must come together to chart a new course for our country if we want to ameliorate the sufferings of the masses. That is why the issue of adopting concrete technology for road construction must be subjected to a thought process to ensure value for money. Hence, this public hearing has become a necessity. On this note, I invite all of you to see this process as an opportunity for you to participate in the legislative process of policy initiation and formulation. It is not a witch hunt exercise. Rather, it is meant to obtain valuable input from all of you, which will assist us and indeed the government on the matter at hand. I want to state categorically that the concern of this committee is delivering service and transparency to Nigerians. This committee is not biased. We are neutral and will listen and work with stakeholders, including members of the public. Therefore, you should feel free to contribute your share to the development of the nation. Honorable colleagues, today marks a significant occasion for us to interact with eminent personalities in the construction industry. This presents an opportunity to expand our knowledge and generate long-lasting legislative outcomes. Finally, I would like to express my gratitude to the right Honorable Speaker and entire leadership for entrusting us with this responsibility. I assure you that the Joint Committee will work diligently and our recommendations will be presented to the House at the appropriate time. With that being said, I warmly welcome everyone to this public hearing. Thank you. May God bless you. God bless the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you.
What I'm about to deliver is the opening remark of the Speaker of the House of Representatives Assembly and I'm going to read his speech, "Mutatis, mutandis, unpolluted, undiluted", in Vavati. And it goes, "Honorable members, invited guests, ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to welcome you to this public hearing, put together by Committees on Works, Environment, Finance, Justice, and Science and Technology, following a resolution passed by the House on the adoption of concrete technology for road construction in Nigeria. This public hearing is in line with our vision to come up with legislative initiative to enable the executive achieve its vision for Nigeria. The issue of infrastructure development and renewal is critical to the renewable agenda of the current administration. This is in no person that is not obvious of the robust condition, situation on our roads will be satisfied with the state of roads, either from the north, the south, or from east to the west. Series of nightmare on how the roads have become this trap and even worse still in kidnapping point about a bit, it is a situation that calls for urgent actions from all of us. In this tense House of Representatives, one of our cardinal objectives is to improve national security so as to ensure economic growth and development. This explains why our sectoral debates, which commenced last week, the service chiefs were the first set of public officers engaged to have good understanding on their efforts in tackling the security challenges confronting us as a nation. For us in the House of Representatives, we believe that improved security will enable people to move about with their businesses, while good infrastructure, especially roads, is a guarantee for economic growth. That is why I must commend the Joint Committee on Works, Environment, Finance, Justice, Science, and Technology to come up with this public hearing in good time, following the passage of the resolution which gave them the mandate to organize the program. The issue at hand is the adoption of concrete technology for road construction in Nigeria. This has generated a lot of concern, which has become the attention of the House, hence these initiatives. Let me say at this point that every government policies had its talents and manifest consequences. This public hearing has created an ample opportunity for all of us, our stakeholders, to make valuable contribution on the matter before the legislature. While I will not want to preempt the outcome of this interaction, let us let us see this hearing as an opportunity to change the course of action on how we do things in this country. I therefore urge all of you to bring to bear your experience and professional expertise in the discussions that will involve. On this note, it is my singular privilege to declare this public hearing open for deliberations by all stakeholders. Having said this, this what I read is the speech of the Speaker as a Nigerian and as a glorified man. I felt like I'm satisfied with the capacity and the capability of the gentlemen that formed this committee. And I'm very optimistic that by the array of brains we are stakeholders. I am very, very sure that there will be an avenue where you cross fertilized ideas and come up with something different. I am of the opinion that the wisdom in bringing or assembling brains is to extract from each and every one of you, which at the end of the day, you'll be able to come up with something that will make Nigeria under this administration see doing something outside the box, whether it will fly. It may serve as a litmus test. So I urge you to please be free and less compare nots and see whether we can be able to change the narratives as we are moving towards a generational change. On the side of my colleagues here, I have no doubt that they will be fair, they will be unbiased, they will be balanced in their resolution and in their recommendations. It is on this note that I appreciate all of you and once again, on the instruction of the Speaker, I hereby once again declare this public hearing open. May God continue to guide you.
These engagements serve as a forum for experts in the construction industry to make recommendations on the merits and demerits of using cement concrete and asphalt cement concrete for road construction.
It's blended, some of you say, no, it's flexible. Whatever, it's in your hands. We are just here to listen to you with an open mind. So do we have a list of presentations?
All of us here present will know for sure that in the past few years, the economy has not been smiling. It's been affecting a lot of, you know, almost everything. Prices have gone on the increase everywhere. We've had issues and I'll just give an example because I know a lot of people are from the southwest here. I heard a lot of Yor people and then of course, some of our brothers from the north. They have a project, Lagos-Ibada Expressway, which I know is of national importance. And then, of course, Apapa-Oshodi Expressway. When we started Lagos-Ibada in 2013, the price of bitumen was about 140,000 to 150,000 Naira per ton. Cement was between 26,000 and 27,000 Naira per ton. Diesel was about 140, 150 Naira per liter. Today, the same product, bitumen, has moved from 140,000 to 150,000 to about 1,200,000 Naira. That is an increase of over 700%. Cement, right now, is about maybe around 90,000 to 100,000, which translates about 5,000 Naira per bag, which is about 250% increase. So over a period of 10 years, you can see the movement of cement, which is a major ingredient of rigid pavement, and bitumen, that is a major ingredient of flexible. This has moved 250%, the other one has moved 70, 750%. On our Abuja-Kaduna Kano here, when we started it, bitumen was about 280,000 Naira per ton and cement was about 49,700 Naira per ton. That's about 100% increase on the pack of cement, just 280 here. And then the bitumen itself is now has moved over 300%. So for us, when we talk about our flexible, even when a project is awarded in the ministry, we are not even sure of how much we completed because of this rising cost of bitumen. You're not sure. So when we make provision for VOP in our contract, for us, we believe for rigid pavement, it can be managed. And then for flexible, it's a bit very, very difficult. And when I talk about terrain, yes, we look at the attitude of our people. We are, well, I don't know whether I should still call us third nation. And for us, the attitude of our people also plays a part in whatever decision we should take. And I'll bring us back to those of us who are familiar with the nation's only port and that is Atapapa and Tingkan in Lagos. And for those who know Lagos well, about five years, six years ago, there was no access to the ports because of bad roads, majorly. Today, you can enter the port and come out. When we used to have the repair works and rehabilitation work, that road was initially constructed on flexible pavement. People bring out all sorts of goods from the ports. So you are not even sure of what they are bringing out in the container, fully loaded. It begins to have effects because nothing, nobody was controlling the absolute load. Similarly, you see some of our brothers along that area, those who sell cars, see them blocking drainage outlets just to have access to their carports. Anytime it rains, everywhere is flooded. Once there is no way for water to go, it comes back on the road and from there the road is destroyed. And then if you come down towards a place called Ladu Port, where you have this auto, auto trading market, you see our people have also converted the road to mechanic workshop. And of course, part of Apapa, they repair their trucks, they repair vehicles and you see diesel all over the road. For the roads that were constructed on a flexible pavement, of course, this has led to early destruction of those sections of the road. But today, we have fixed Apapa-Oshodi Expressway on rigid pavement and some of these fears have been taken care of. So we are also aware that, of course, not all the roads will go and redo it at the same time. We have looked especially when you have a single carriageway because when you do, when you do rigid pavement, because of the curing nature, you know, after you apply your concrete, you need to allow like about 28 days for it to cure. You need to divert traffic, you know, to another lane. On single carriageway, it might be difficult. So we put a lot of emphasis on our dual carriageway. And when our people talk about dust, which one is more expensive? Which one is this? We begin to debate. First and foremost, we should know that the major ingredient in rigid cement is locally produced. I'm not sure there's any geopolitical zone in Nigeria today that do not have a cement factory or that do not have a limestone deposit. And by the time you look at our bitumen, of course, even though we have it in Ogu and Ondo areas, but it's not, well, it's not in use at the moment and the bitumen we use today is imported. And when we also look at the price comparison in the Ministry of Works today, our rigid pavement is based on 350,000 per cubic, reinforcement inclusive, which translates to, maybe if I convert it to square meters, to about 70,000 per square meters. On our major roads, our major roads, our major highways, Lagos-Ibada, our girl from Oyo there, the prince, the Oyobomo Shor, it has a double binder and a wareling. And when you look at even Abuja-Kaduna Kano, you also have the double binder there, wareling and of course, some other bituminous materials. Today, the present cost of a binder is about 25,000 per square meters. 25,000 Naira per square meters. So when you look at the double layer, it becomes 50,000 Naira. A function of... Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a square meters. And then by the time you look at your wareling, our wareling is about 20, 22,000 Naira. When you add 22,000 to 50,000, that's already 72,000 Naira. And then we are talking of the same with it that is about 70,000. And what's the important thing? Even when you do it, you are not sure of how much you will complete the flexible because if the dollar goes up tomorrow, the price of bitumen will also go up. And we are not saying it will not affect cement, but the impact is always very, very near. And when you look at, this is all about our nation. It's all about Nigeria. We also engage some of these cement factories. I don't know, you called the Dangote, I don't know if they are here. We then get the Dangote, Gua, and Lafaj. Right now, as we speak, it told us, informed us that, look, if you start this project, that they have the capacity, that they have the capacity that as we speak today, they are operating under 30, under 40, 50% capacity. And that for us, they are ready to also come up. Well, whichever way it is, you know, in Nigeria, you may not be too sure of certain things until you get into it. But one thing is that even, and of course, some people will say, how does it affect the ordinary man on the street? The cement we use in the rigid pavement is all this one we use in the jumbo bags, you know, and not the 50 kg. So I think the cement factories are also looking at that. And like I said, it's all about our nation. Once it's encouraged, I also mention to you, we are not asking all the roads in Nigeria to convert to rigid. This rigid pavement, if it is encouraged, it's also going to create employment for our people because we still have a lot of locations where you have limestones that have not been utilized. It too creates that. And then for our people who are from Lagos, you can also see most of our roads, critical roads from Lagos. The honorable from Sulu Lere, I meet you for the first time, but I'm sure you know that we have a project from Deep Sea, that is where you have the biggest refinery that is coming up now. The Dangote refinery from the Deep Sea coming out, we are constructing it on rigid pavement. We don't want a situation where Apapa will resurface in Lake. The old Lake Epe, Lagos State is doing it on flexible. We are doing our own on rigid. And we are going to continue it from there to Epe and post out on Beni Shagamo. But what I just want to say and in order to round up, if we not to summarize, is that it's all about our nation. It's all about Nigeria. We'll encourage our people, like I also mentioned, most of the roads we do in Lagos today. You know, in Lagos, for those who know, like even if you are not using the CRCP, you use all these interlocking ties, interlocking ties. Those are the things they use in Lagos to, you know, to reduce the cost of all the pitash maintenance, you know, on the, on the flexible pavement. So for us, it's all about Nigeria and that we should just encourage and allow this to pass. Like we said, we are not combating all our roads to rigid. Thank you very, very much.
Like specifications for roads or any engineering infrastructure for that matter, like power stations, dams, waste management treatment plan, do not lend themselves to legislative investigation. As doing so, we are bound to the legislature taking responsibilities for any unwholesome act. Out of great respect, engineers have for these hallowed green chambers. We have come here to provide clarifications on the appropriateness of subjecting highly technical matters to legislative investigation. As no crime or law has been violated or has contemplated under sections 88 and 89 of the Nigerian Constitution as amended. In addition, road specifications are not legislated upon as they are so dynamic and within the purview of specialists like the technical engineers and highway engineers. This is in line with best global professional practice. And the team from the Ministry of Works have alluded to it. And I'm surprised that they didn't say that they have a manual on concrete roads and nobody stopping them from deciding which pavement to use depending on the infrastructure. Nobody's stopping them. It's already there. And it's important for me to say, how do you make a road durable and non-treble? The cry for the adoption of rigid pavement came to a crescendo with the statements allegedly credited to one of our revered members, engineer the Umani, FNS, who is a fellow of our society, the Honorable Minister of Works. The Honorable Minister, to our knowledge, has come out in order for him, has confirmed by his director to say that he was quoted definitely out of context. But there is no doubt that the choice of which materials to use in a road construction is governed by a lot of factors that include the geological formation, soil type, design life anticipated at the point of design, availability of raw materials, traffic loss and volume, environmental conditions, availability of funds, equipment availability, and construction methodologies, and skill manpower. Coming to tell us that three people, in a country of 300 million people, have had said that they have capacity, is leading the game, is breaking out the hands too early that are being driven by people who want to have monopoly of the sector. The higher the specifications, the cost there, the projects. At the core of the durability of any infrastructure, including road, are the design criteria which will lead to the specifications that the contractors would build to. These design criteria are guided by codes of practice, design manuals, and charts, and formulae. I've invited some of my technical people to come with a team, a sample of a design manual and chart, designed by the Federal Ministry of Works and Housing, that involves... So it is not something that will come here as a committee and interrogate. If it does make one about that, okay. But if not for our public hearing, there's something to be technical interrogation because there are no data, no papers to play, no paper to question them. Therefore, adherents to these global specifications, codes, and standards are the basic requirements for sustainable, durable road infrastructure delivery. The capacity of the contractors, the competence of the supervising and design professionals also affect the quality of the road. Road construction is very vulnerable to weather conditions and therefore funding becomes critical, especially during rainy season in delivering road projects. Incidentally, he mentioned Abuja-Kaduna and all the roads. And if you go through your records, I don't know, everywhere, my signature is in those roads. But that road had been under construction not because of the capacity of the contractor or because of the material, because at a point in the year, they didn't have money in the budget. If you have a copy of 2003 budget, some road projects have as much as 1 million Naira. 1 million, not 1 billion, 1 million Naira. Whether it's in concrete or asphalt, if you put 1 million Naira in that road project, it will be there forever. Then adequate funding of most major road countries. Then adequate funding of most major road contracts and coupled with fiscal policy changes of government have not only affected the cost of roads, but all items, services, products and materials in the country, which engineer has said. Again, the way road contractors are engaged tends to throw up technically incompetent and financially weak companies. The use of selective tendering process, which of recent has become a norm, lends itself to potential abuses. These are many, are some of the reasons why the Honorable Minister is crying for help. We are here to support the Honorable Minister. Minister's concern that our roads are made more durable and durable. Having said this, we appreciate the intervention of the National Assembly to the ongoing discussion on the rigid and flexible pavement with the view to building cost-effective durable roads. The emphasis is cost-effective and durable roads. And we don't discuss it in a, in a form like this. You need technical people, cost experts and come with our evidence. The choice of which materials to use is guided by the factors already enumerated above. Just like we cannot legislate on what medicine a doctor can use to treat a patient.
Engineer, you're not going to teach us our job, just make your presentation and take your seats.
So what we are saying there, Max, that experts have the provisional duty and responsibility to design and specify materials to meet the needs of the client. Generally, road development, whether flexible or rigid, has some design presuppositions. And these include loading, target traffic of cumulative repetitive of equivalent standard axle load throughout the pavement lines. Foundation, prevailing subgrade which is the foundation, construction materials, properly processed good quality construction materials of some base. Maintainance, enforcement of maintenance scheme during the payment lifespan. Funding, adequate funding and time disposment as construction progresses. Experts, availability of technical and technological capacity of every state, at every stage of the project construction, including construction, design, construction supervision, commissioning and maintenance to guarantee good quality road asset development as well as availability of competent contractors, which incidentally over the years have declined drastically. Proper supervision, the location of MBBI and the Ministry of Science and Technology instead of the Ministry of Works and Housing, does not provide for a policy or proper policy alignment in the deployment of MBBI's research findings. It is our opinion that research findings of MBBI will be better applied in the Ministry of Works. We therefore seek legal legislative interventions to move them to the Ministry of Works so that all their findings can be tested on the roads. Finally, our members, the senior chair, well, thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation. We want to assure you that the state of our road infrastructure in the country is not the fault of the material used. But due to factors which MBBI as a research institute has identified and is working with the professionals to update our design criteria and data. On this note, on behalf of the Society of Engineers, I want to thank you for the opportunity. Thank you so much.
We are not going to make decisions for the executive. No one is suggesting that. You sit in your meetings, we are not going to be there. But we oversee you at the end of the day, want to know what you're doing. So it's always nice to know what we're doing from the ground floor up so that it won't be when you finish building, then we'll now start asking questions. The budget has been laid by the president. We're going to look at it, we're going to look at the reports. If we don't understand what is going on, how do we approve? So this is a knowledge gathering exercise. Everything is doing start and end in this room. We're out weeks before, we're talking to experts weeks before. We traveled hundreds of kilometers with, with the men from the Ministry of Works. And after today, work will still go on before we make our own recommendations. If we say legislature, we don't even want to know anything and they bring the appropriation and we say, no, this doesn't make sense. But we are putting the platform here so that we can all air our views, so that we can all learn and make better decisions for Nigeria. And you say we don't have the power or the rights. You are out of order. You can come to the parliament to tell us what the parliament should be doing. But I decided, like I said earlier on, to let it flow because it still made a lot of sense after that. I like to talk about the road bill, the appropriation just can keep funding, the annual budget can fund our road. How much are you bringing for, for budget, I think three hundred and eighty billion? That's nothing. If you look at the challenges that, that, that we have, right, trillions, tens of trillions will be needed to truly fix our roads. So the three hundred and seventy billion you, the president laid yesterday for the Ministry of Works, is a drop in the ocean, we can't do anything, sometimes I don't envy you. Right? So we must all come together to find a way to fund our road properly. You are from, starting from parliament does not do this to now seeking legislative support. Which one are we going to, which one are we going to choose? So anything that has to do with executive and appropriation, we have the powers to look into it. But we are not doing your jobs for you. At the end of the day, you do your job, you are the engineers, you are the experts. Fine, we have engineers amongst us, experts. But I emphasize, our powers and privileges extend to any corner of the country where public funds has been utilized. Thank you. Who's the next on the line?
The road reform is very important. And the eight assembly and the nine assembly have passed the Road Sector Reform Bill and the Federal Highway Authority. These two bills want to our players at the, this honorable house and committee to see to the essence of this bill. If these bills are passed, I think they are solution to major issues we have in our roads. And these reforms are very important. On the issue of rigid and concrete pavement, we, all of them are what we require to do our work with. They are all part of our materials. Like we say, the generic science and economy determine which type of pavement you use. And the terrain is also very important. So all of them are important. So we have to carry out the right in generic investigation, the design, the axle load and what is required for you to have a very good road. All these points are stated in my memorandum and speech. So for us to have this reform, this authority and the Road Sector Bill, if they are passed, will get the necessary money or the way we tell to get our roads in the position, in the condition that they're supposed to be. And we also want to look at the issue of our bitumen deposit. I want to believe that the bitumen deposit is part of our local content. This is a good local content in Odo and Owo. And I think there should be legislation so to where that investors should be brought about. Some of these are big contractors, should be part of what they're supposed to, to, to invest in this bitumen in Odo and Owo State. We cannot have something lying just on our backyard. And then so that they can also complement whatever we are importing and whether we are also going to use cement, concrete for rigid pavement, we need these investors. These big contractors should be called upon to invest in this bitumen in Nigeria, it's very important. Because we cannot have bitumen and go out and import bitumen. It doesn't make sense. So this is very important for the legislative to look into this. We'll be happy if that is done. We, as a professional body, we are ready to give our professional advice. We are ready to work with the house, we are going to give them any cooperation they want so that we can have the best road in Nigeria. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If you do asphalt badly, it will fail. If you do asphalt properly, correctly, with the right materials, it will stand. And if you do concrete well, with correct material, with the standards, it will last long. So there's no need to have any argument at all on this matter. Edgar Nakuti, I don't think anybody can stop you from doing your concrete. But you have to do it well. When you do asphalt, do it well. That's how, so far, so far, what I've learned in the last few weeks and today, that's what I've learned. Am I right or right? No, you're not, you're going to come, you're going to, that's why I said, Edgar Nakuti, that's why I said, you have to wait because you have replies, ultras and rebuttals. That's why I said, it's not, you are not done with the, presentation is not the end of it, okay? Right? Once again, I want to appreciate all of you that are here, who are engineers. And I want to appreciate all other stakeholders as well. Your being here today, from what I have seen here, is a very great sense of commitment to building Nigeria of our dream. Going forward, on this particular issue that, you know, has been bothering every one of us, I think one of the first thing I want to say is to express my excitement and, you know, happiness for the level of the turnout that I am seeing here this morning. Although there are, there are some other stakeholder that I expect here, they are not here. But going by, I mean, if I need to block the graph of the few people that are here, I think that's fair enough. That's fair enough for us as the committee. And I want to make a very brief contribution before I reflect on, I mean, reflect on the senior colleague here and the director from the Ministry of Works, the director of the project. So the first thing I want to say is, I'm not speaking for the chairman, I'm just speaking as, you know, someone that is contributing on this program, I mean, on this, you know, issue. I feel fulfilled from the position of the director of works. Number one, the original information that we have that all Nigerian roads must be concrete has already been adjudicated, if I get you very well. Is that correct? So please, can we clap for all that? So that is all. Number two, we are talking about the choice of concrete or asphalt. All what he has said, there is no point in me wasting my time again since he's already speaking. I believe he's speaking for the executive and that's basically why I said that is fine. So there is no point in making noise unnecessarily again on this topic. Because apart from building good roads, my own position is to ensure that our infrastructural development in Nigeria should accommodate local content. And if you insist, I stand to be quoted, that you want to embark on rigid pavement. Rigid pavement, excellent material for us to adopt as a way of constructing our roads. That's why the chairman said to every layman on the streets, they will be clapping their hands when the year of rigid pavement, I mean, all roads should be built in concrete. But when you listen to the two, the Nigerian Society of Engineers position and the director, I think this debate is already coming to a close in terms of quality submission. Because the quality of road is not a function of either concrete or asphalt. It is a function of quality assurance and quality control. Your quality assurance has to do with the planning, has to do with the design, has to do with the specification, has to do with the procurement process. I say procurement, I repeat. If your procurement is right, then it has to do with the selection of the contractors. Your procurement process may be very right, but your selection of contractor, if you give rigid pavement to your wife to go and execute, you are wasting your money. If you give rigid pavement to contractor who has no equipment to get it executed, it's a waste of time. Now, let me put it this way, we're talking about rigid pavement. There are about five components that you need to look into and I want the director to take good cognizance of that. That's why I said, immediately you said, we have, you are not forcing any contractor to use rigid pavement or flexible pavement. We are done. So there is no dispute any longer. Why? Because the choice of rigid pavement should be a function of all the parameter that have been defined. I don't want to be wasting my time on that. Traffic forum takes a very key position. Your foundation is a major challenge. The execution process is another parameter. Rigid pavement in context, number one, you should be talking about concrete placement. Your concrete that is coming from your backing plants or you're the place of placement. Two, you talk about consolidation. The consolidation has to do with the concrete itself that you want to handle. And do you want to handle it in terms of compassion, in terms of tapping, ensuring there is no void when the concrete is properly placed? Then you've got to really take cognizance of what you call finishes. And that is why we shouldn't be deceived in the issue of when we are buying asphalt, asphalt is expensive. Chemical as an additive, I don't know if pure chemistry. If you want to stabilize the base material or concrete material, these additives alone, they are expensive. If you want to quality concrete, that will give you the type of finishes, which is another element in the rigid pavement. Finishes, how do you want your concrete to look like on completion? Do you just want to cast concrete as if you are casting petrol station? Or you are casting the concrete in your contract? Listen to me finally on that. Having said on the finishes, you talk about curing. How many of us can handle curing of concrete in terms of quality that we expect? That is, as far as that is concerned. When you finish about that, you talk about the joint itself. When you have layers, I mean, road that is more than one layer. When you have a layer five, you can have just maybe three point six five meter, you do it the way you like and you get away with it. But when you now have two, three series of layers, how do you relate these two layers together professionally? The director, you need, you have a lot of work to do in that direction if you really want to do very good rigid pavement. That is concerning person, listen. Finally, my position. The executive in quotes, if that is what the, the director is representing. You told us that, you are not insisting that this is this or that. So we have categories of, we have express road, we have bracarried road, we have single layer road. The choice of your contractors, the choice of people that will do the job, those, what they can manage, what they cannot manage. So you identify those who can manage deep projects, those who can manage medium project, those who can manage, you know, small, small project. I think that is my own opinion at this point, okay? Thank you. As briefly as possible, please.
Thank you. House, chairman, House Committee on Works, honorable members of the committee, my former presidents and professional colleagues. My colleagues have actually spoken a lot, especially our leader in NSE and our colleagues. I'm the national chairman of the Nigerian Institution of Civil Engineers. I want to quickly add my voice to what we're debating here. And our submission is actually made to capture the strategies for sustainable roads and highways in Nigeria. So one of these strategies of course concerns what we are discussing today, which is flexible and rigid pavement. I'll just read the last paragraph of the executive summary, which says that the choice of road pavement depends on several factors. And is determined through rigorous and thorough study. That's what we have all been saying here. It's not just something you decree, it goes through a process. And our colleagues in the Ministry of Works, Federal Ministry of Works, they know that very well.
Ministry of Works, Federal Ministry of Works, they know that very well. So in the process, all necessary factors are taken into consideration in arriving at the most suitable one. These are detailed in sections eight to 10. I'm not going to bother us so much because we don't have time, but I'll just say one of two things. One, that we have all agreed that if we do a rigid pavement badly, it will fail. If we do a flexible pavement badly, it will fail. The same thing vice versa. So basically, we said that rigid pavement, because of a load, I even agree, rigid pavement has a ceiling to the road, to the load it can carry. So all this is determined in the process. So just to put what engineer Jibola said, consultants have to be fully involved. So along the line, all these processes will be determined, and specific roads that really require rigid pavements may be designed and consulted with rigid pavement. While those flexible can serve, will be consulted in flexible pavement. There's no doubt that rigid pavement is more expensive than flexible pavement. Anybody telling you that, oh, because of the, is flexible, rigid pavement is more expensive. But in some situations, like the very, very high load pavement, it might be very, it might be good at the long run to use rigid pavement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I like that brief. The cost of transport has gone up by 500% in the last three years. Now, everybody is talking about concrete roads, and I would like to emphasize what we have just said here, concrete roads have a cost double than asphalt roads, exactly double. So my question is very simple, where do you get the budgets to do that? Now, the ministry can say what they want to, but I can just give one advice, get a cost on asphalt and next they put, and ask a few contractors if they are able to execute that cement in that way. Because even we are talking about Oshodi Apapa, yes? If you have to replace that road with realistic prices on concrete, well, you will fall, you know, dead right there. So we need to know that today, in the economy, we need the roads. It's the heart of the whole economy. It has been stopped in the last six months, nothing has been done because of forcing, you know, contractors to change to concrete. How do you change contractors to concrete if they don't have the technology and they don't have the machinery? So even the next four years, you want to have roads and you want really to have an economy that works, please stop all these kind of dreams. Execute the contracts that were signed and analyze maybe a few roads that can be done to a few specialists, like here and there. But the rest has to continue because otherwise, all your economy goes.
Thank you. For me, as a politician, and as a member of the ruling party, and as a proud supporter of Ashua Jibola Metinubu, I wanted to commission roads, lots of roads, well-done roads. The reason why we are really concerned, one of the reasons why we are really concerned about this thing, this issue. He mentioned that six months, things have slowed down. When will President Bolat Inubu start to commission these roads? If we totally switch, especially the contracts that have been awarded, and we have nothing to show for it, our enemies will be happy, obviously. So I hope it's not our enemies that are behind these things so that Ashua Jibola can fail. That's my aim. We have to show Nigerians that this is truly the renewed hope government. On a more serious note, on a more serious note, Ministry of Works, I know you're passionate about these things, and I'm with you all the way. I'm going to support you all the way as a committee. But at the same time, the overall objective is to deliver roads, quality roads, as fast as possible. All this stopping, slowing down, please let us find a solution so that people can get back on site and start working again. That's very important to me. We need to show workings, we need to show results, and I trust engineer Kuti and the crew that this will not be a problem at all, it's going to assure us. We are all in the same boat, so I want to thank you once again and have a good day.